The place in the approved, even though we haven't approved it yet, just kind of separated out so you guys can kind of see what has taken place. And I think I addressed all the questions that were brought up during our meeting. Plus, probably a couple other things that we will.
So, just start with, we don't have minutes from the previous meeting.
Yeah.
I believe, but it was recorded by the Lake County examiner.
I looked, but I didn't find it on there.
Okay. And I think just a brief summary was that we had gone through the budget, and we had questions that we wanted presented to Roberta, and then Sandy and I had volunteered that we would meet with Roberta and go over those questions. And then that we would meet again today before tomorrow when the Budget Committee had, when the budget had to be approved, correct?
Yeah.
Is that kind of very recent revelation? Okay.
Well, I'll hear some.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, so that's kind of where we're at.
Right.
Okay.
And just right off the top, you'll see under property tax and the two highlighted area on the very first page, property tax current, we were able to increase that, and the reason why is on the debt service that is on the last page of our budget, Fund 60, we have paid that debt off, so we won't be needing the money. We'll get, we'll still receive it through our taxes, but it has been paid off, so that goes into the general fund.
You don't have anything else going down.
Right. So, that Fund 60 is going to go away, and that has increased our revenues on the very first page.
And then the increase in property and the delinquent was where it's at currently, right?
That's it, right, yes. Yeah, right.
Okay.
And I think we also put ninety-eight, eight, nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars in that line item because that was to close out Fund 60.
Okay.
So.
And then the property tax current went from six ninety to eight ten.
And the reason is because then we added that hundred and thirty, from the six ninety, we added another.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, yes.
Yeah.
Because you won't have debt service.
Oh, because of the debt.
Yeah, because we continue to receive that fund. It's kind of like the nine-one-one tax money that the county receives, but even though the debt's been paid off for years, so, yeah.
Just into general operation.
Right, and so it always goes into the general fund. So, and then there was a question, let's see, go ahead and ask questions.
The marijuana tax, I thought we received nine thousand dollars. As a, like. Front of the street, and I'm getting going off of the previous meetings.
I love that one. Right, hold on.
And this year-to-date is missing a whole bunch of pages, so.
Since the back, yeah.
Well, there's also a huge section under Town Hall, General Fund.
Right, yeah.
I think what we did is we ran that, and it just didn't off the pages or even pages.
Yes, and even somebody even paid, like, the entire Town Hall budget.
So, as far as revenue that we received on marijuana tax, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So, it should be.
And that's just since January 1st, correct?
No, that is, we started receiving it last year as state revenue fund.
Okay.
Okay, and that does not include the three percent that we will be getting in from the town for the two distributors that we have, or two tailors that we have.
So, it's the eight thousand plus the three percent?
Right, well, we don't know what.
So, we should put that at least a minimum of nine thousand, is that right?
upside.
The state revenue share?
Is that where you're putting marijuana tax?
We have the three percent, I put five thousand in there, and then.
That seems low.
I know, but how do you know?
Yeah.
How do you know?
Those stores are busy all the time.
They are.
The busiest place is in Dallas.
Well, isn't there revenue state, isn't there revenue public information?
It will be, but I, and I had to contact the finance department, the department of the, do you listen to estimate of that three percent?
Mine now is broken today.
So, the state revenue share should be nine thousand, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, do you want to increase that to the nine?
There you go, Adrian.
I'm just very conservative when it comes to budgets, so.
Which one would you?
So, why are we increasing the?
The marijuana tax, state revenue share, nine, because we've got eighty-seven.
Right, eighty-seven now, so we should be, nine thousand should be a good thing.
Because at five thousand dollars, that's one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in sales.
Is it about a week?
I don't know about a week, but.
I actually heard that the prices are plummeting more, so.
They are, because they have many.
Yeah, so.
Oregon has a surplus.
A ten-year surplus.
A ten-year surplus.
Yeah, they're putting a ban on new licensing.
Oh.
Growing it.
So, five thousand on our local tax.
It's just an estimate. It's just an estimate, until the first year's through.
Right. Okay. I'm just writing. I'm just writing my important stuff.
Okay.
I showed that we had questions on the finance clerk. We're moving on to the town, the summary of the general fund.
Right. And I did make changes to that, and included an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in that particular.
Which one's that?
That would be, you had requested an increase in the town manager position to eighty thousand, so I changed that, wanted more money in the town finance position, so I put twenty-five thousand dollars in there.
For the general fund?
Yes. So, I increased, I had it at seventy thousand for the town manager, I put it at eighty, and then I included twenty-five in the finance clerk position, which would be like part-time.
Didn't we discuss putting that, I mean, I'd say fifty thousand for actual qualified finance clerk.
And one of the things that we had talked about during it was that the accounts payable and payroll, that Tana, it's split with the water in the sewer, because her position is split with the water in the sewer.
And she does accounts payable, payroll, and utility, all the utility. But hers is included in, so part of that finance person, if you hire a full-time finance person, Tana's already doing that right now for the two.
So, that money will come out of that, and go into this.
Yeah, and that also helps, because one of the things that we have to have in the town is a separation of dues. So, you know, like, if you do hire a finance person, you know, that's kind of what I'm doing and what Cassell is doing for us, and so they're separate from doing actual hands-on AEP and payroll, so there's a separation there, and then the same with the utility billing clerk. We have her bringing in the money, but always somebody else takes the money to the bank or, you know, helps the deposit, because Yon and Tana work together to do the deposit.
Internal control.
Yeah. And then the part-time ordinance person, we wanted to increase that, increased another five, so it's fifteen, of course, I had to increase the by because of that.
We had a question regarding the extra help and what that was, and that's Christina Campbell's position.
Right.
And she's the one who comes and fills in when others aren't here.
And does about an hour and a half in the afternoons, and we also, we really do need that very, very part-time person on Thursdays and Fridays, or just a couple hours, so I think that add one out, did it go out?
Yep, it should go out Wednesday.
It should be on the Wednesday, though.
So, what, two part-time persons?
Right, and Chris may not stay on because of her work now and some other issues, so it may be that we'll have somebody that'll do it, but we really need that person, especially one, Tana's sick or I was sick, or, you know, whatever it left on, all by themselves, and I don't like to leave anybody here by themselves.
And I believe on the medical dental, we left that the same, because at the end of May, you said that it was thirty-five thousand currently.
Right.
I saw that at the end of May.
Yeah, so, do we know why that's significantly lower?
Because of how it was distributed, because the insurance for, and we may want to increase it a little bit, require the finance clerk person for more than, you know, because of time, more than, you know, part-time, because at twenty hours a week or less, then you don't have to pay the medical.
For if you're twenty-one and over.
Yeah, and they'll be right there on us for that, so that's, right now, Don's and the town managers is only coming out of that, this Town Hall budget, for medical.
Because Thomas comes out of the.
Waters.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense.
We talked about the engineer retainer, ten thousand, because that was quite a bit less, but it was because there probably wouldn't be as many projects this coming year as at a Town Hall.
On the Town Hall budget.
It's, okay, just right there. The dues, we can talk about the dues, and what they were for is what we wanted to know.
League of Oregon Cities, is that the one?
Yeah, there's the League of Oregon Cities, there's the local government, it's LGIP, Local Government Institute, personnel, it's LPA, because we have LGIP, which is Investment School, and LGPI.
Also that suit?
So, we have LGPI, LGIP, and OCCNA, which is Oregon City County Managers Association, and then we have, Don belongs to one, which is called the Oregon Inocent Reporters Association, Tana belongs to one, of course, hers comes out of a different one, but, you know, there's quite a few different ones, of course, they increase every year, and a lot of it, like, the League of Oregon Cities is based on per capita and per salary, so it depends on how much the manager's making, it's like five percent of that type of thing, so, yeah, it's kind of.
But, no, I thought we had discussed that the dues for the LLC, LGP, that we would make it five thousand, because it was currently five, yes, but then the next one for memberships, we were only going to make five hundred.
Oh.
Because that was, it was only four hundred dollars to date.
I missed that, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So, that would be five thousand.
Which one should I put in there?
One, right here, so it should be five hundred instead of.
And the wellness incentive was currently seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to date, so the nine twenty-five is probably pretty accurate.
Yeah.
We're talking about the police officers, that's what we had, what the contract is going to be, with three people, with four people, or how that was working.
Right, and, so, are we, we're on the, it should be on.
Sheriff police contract.
Yeah, that's six eleven for four people.
Right, and I just put that there.
Yes, go back, go back.
Sorry, I tried in four made it.
Oh, okay.
I shouldn't have just put them on yours, I know, but, okay, so what I did on the sheriff's contract, if we went with four officers, it would be the six eleven, eight twenty, and we may have enough money this, next year to do that, and that was kind of up to the council, so I put that amount there, left it at the four sixty.
What is your feeling on being able to sustain that, though, if we go?
That's, that's my concern, and that's what's one of the things we kind of talked about, is how well it goes, how well it works for that first year with the three, and now we're down to two, so, you know, it's hard to hire and then have to remake.
That's right, yeah, that's why I don't want to.
That's why I like to do a very cautionary thing, to see how it's working with the three officers.
You have a little buffer, but with your tax increase, or not increase, without the debt service, but.
Right.
It uses it all, and some.
And then you have no buffers, and there's some things coming down that will come out of the general fund, that we'll talk about in the different All-United, that are going to be very expensive, so.
So, are you going to leave it at the six eleven to give us that buffer?
Or the four sixty?
The four sixty, with the three officers, is still the four, I just put that number so that you guys would know what the contract said.
Because the current contract is three officers.
With an option for four.
And it would go with four, then it would be that six eleven.
What's the three, is it four sixty?
Yeah.
And I think that's a decision that the council is going to make.
Right, and we can still talk about it tomorrow night before we actually approve this, is something we need to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, the special project in the Capitol lot, like, ten thousand dollars, that was for re-carpeting and the table repair in the haring room, that was more than you should instead of, yeah, this would be more, do we have one coming?
Well, we've been working with, what's his name?
Junior.
Junior is supposed to be building one, but that's been a year now.
He's retired, isn't he?
I know.
He's been busy ever since.
Is he back at the county?
Yeah, he's working.
Yeah, he's working overtime over there again.
It's going to be another year. But it was something that we had talked about, to get something that kind of puts you guys more on a platform, you know, a little bit up, and have a.
More stuff.
Yeah. Anyway, so that's what that is.
Can't sit and.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, I think that, any other questions in this section? What was the I S?
What it is, is we used to pay, it used to be just for the police and dispatch nine-one-one, and we split it out, so it's a resource management program that we still use, whether we have a police department or not. Now, the jail has one for just all of their jail, like cat calls type of thing, but it's a system that they have to have, so the nine-one-one pays seven thousand something on it, but we still need to do that, and I didn't know where else to put it.
Okay.
And that might be as further down the road when you're negotiating police contract, to have them pay, so that's, it just wasn't negotiated when.
Is it required per entity? So, what does county sheriff's department, with their licensing, are they, do they participate in currently, I would say?
Not in, well, they participate in ours, yes.
Okay.
And as far as I know, I'm talking to Anna, that I don't have yet now for their jail.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And this is where another discussion comes in.
Right, and we discussed about the legal services in our meeting, and currently it's thirty thousand dollars this year already, and I don't know if that's easy, and I would hope that the council is using wisely.
It's currently forty-one thousand, according to this.
Okay, well, that was thirty.
Yeah, between the services and the retainers.
Right, right, well, no, thirty thousand is just the services, the retainer is separate.
Thirty-five for retaining services, twenty-six for retaining.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that is a light night of the week, this mess, because, I'll tell you where we are right now, because we have outside legal that has been helping with negotiations, terminations, arbitrations, and probably mediation in the future, that's very high. But what it will do in the long run is benefit the town by using a professional labor attorney, you know, and so that is why, I was just going to let you know what it is as, just print out, but it is high, it isn't very good, and it's not going to go down.
Couple of going on in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Right, but I don't feel that the ten thousand is adequate.
No, and that's why I put questions next to it, because I wasn't sure if we were going to be doing some mediation stuff, and I think that's why I put questions next to it, that we need to increase it.
So, the legal services are going to continue into next year.
Yeah.
So, I would say that I definitely had a question on that, because I had written down where the town's currently at, and where the budget is at, and.
So, you're twenty thousand dollars shy this year in the budget, and so next year.
I feel like you need to add another point to that.
And make it at least thirty thousand?
I agree, unfortunately.
What's your opinion?
Do you find that?
I was going to go a little higher, but. I was thinking thirty-five. I was thinking, making it at least thirty-five.
Okay. You're getting thirty-five everywhere.
And I.
No, is that for the legal retainer?
The services.
For the services, we still have.
We have current.
Thirty-five thousand?
And I would include what Steve and the labor negotiations.
Well, in other cases, we have a surplus, and we.
Your contracts, though, so, when you're doing your contracts, are they for one year? Are they for two years?
Usually for three.
Okay, so then you might be.
We have a contract.
You might use like thousands.
Yeah, you're going to have a higher now, and then you'll probably have a low, and then you'll apply again, most of the labor negotiations.
And then negotiate, and you're using the attorney during council meetings, right?
That's.
Because everybody, everybody has to be given their.
Talking to the attorney?
We can't be one-on-one, can't be doing one-on-one type stuff, and that type of thing, right?
We use the local attorney for contracts.
Okay.
Or outside of the labor.
Oh, okay, okay.
But like, if you have a general.
Like law, and that's, or if you use.
Nothing, yeah.
Arbitration.
Most everything has been labor related, I think.
It is.
But it seems to always be labor.
So, are we going to seek a retainer with a labor separate, or are we just going to do as we're doing now? Because I think, if I remember correctly, this retainer only includes the local.
Right.
Well, Stephen's through CIS, right?
He is through CIS.
Okay, so we'll have to do a retainer.
We only pay him hourly.
It would pay it on contract, so.
Everybody in one year makes that thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, yeah. Unfortunately, I hate to say it, but I think that's why.
And the rates aren't going down.
Yep, I'm not finding that one.
Okay, so the next pages are blank, because it was the police contract, basically, now, that goes those pages. And then we have firemen and dispatchers, and the top line used to say firemen and dispatchers, now it just says firemen.
Right.
Even though they're getting both, right?
Right, but they're paid out of the fire.
There is another fund.
Oh, okay. And we decreased, even though, because we have less employees, we're just creating less employees, we're down by twenty grand.
I think the other perspective, dispatch section.
Yeah, I think looking at the financial statements, it came in right around that number.
And then the fire chief went, right, right.
Right.
Yeah. And I am not sure, but I'm not, I'm thinking right now, after I'm really looking at it, because of some things that are coming down the pipe, that we probably should increase that also, because they're looking about going back to, two thousand seven, two thousand nine on back pay issues.
Correct.
The fire chief. The dispatcher's fireman.
For the dispatcher's fireman.
Oh, your time.
Slash dispatcher.
Not the fire chief, it's, yeah, dispatcher's fireman.
Well, in our fire chief position year-to-date is accurate with what was last year's, not this quarter, so.
Right, and the reason is, and we had talked about that, is making a special person that does fire dispatch overseeing, you know, as a one person.
Instead of having two people.
Right, nothing.
Doing the part-time.
Doing that, that's a witness.
So, we're going to have one person do dispatch and fire.
And be a supervisor.
Supervisor.
And somebody who's there on an ongoing basis.
Yes.
Has regular set hours.
So, it'd be a part-time position.
It is.
Yes.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, because the other two get the benefits, and they get hourly wage, just but.
They forget a part, that's showing.
So, how do you do that year, so we're not going to expect this person to work seven days?
He doesn't work like a five-day.
He works like a five-day.
Management.
Schedule like similar to fire, eight to five, or.
Whatever, and he'll be doing some flex on weekends and stuff, but he will actually be.
And they'll flex with fire meetings or any other meetings.
Yeah, and he will attend fire meetings.
And we'll have a very clear job description and all that.
Right, because there's.
Time clock punching, maybe?
Well, I'd love to put one over there.
Are you?
No, they don't.
Okay, do you have one of those?
A time clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, I never look at.
Well, not for you.
You go punch it?
No, maybe sometimes, day to day.
You're gone, you're gone.
Time clocks everywhere I go. I dread them, and they don't like me, so.
Well, and I can tell you, even the salary and people are required to clock in and out, it makes a difference, just so that they can track to make sure that, you know, the required hours, because if they, you know, if they're not there, then they have to take a day off.
It's a safety, so to me as well.
And knowing, yeah, where people are and aren't.
I'd love to do it, I mean, I think that that's something that.
Why can't you?
I can, whoever can.
Union negotiation included in that as well?
No, it's not working.
Okay, so we can, we could do that possibly.
That doesn't affect.
The budget.
It doesn't affect contract.
Five thousand dollars, that's the total.
I'm not sure.
Part-time dispatchers?
Um, it is right now, yeah, but it, we also include it above, too, but I'm trying to separate it out.
Okay.
And then their overtime, of course, is ten.
Right.
Yeah, that's a. But I think if they have a manager over there and they're held accountable, they're not going to be doing this switching and doing all this stuff.
Little game playing.
Well, yeah, there'll be more of a set schedule and somebody there to manage the schedule, so that should.
Is there any idea how much this overtime thing is going to be?
Six thousand.
That you're talking about?
Six thousand.
What was that?
Yeah, ask, if you had any idea how much the overtime would be, that we have back overtime.
Gotcha.
But it could be up to six thousand dollars per employee.
But that's still being negotiated.
Yeah, in like, you know, three years, but it started in, it started in two thousand seven where this big thing happened, so.
Yeah, but under suspension.
All the back there three years.
Because I did one of those five years ago on travel plan for our guys, because we didn't do travel plan, because we're not responsible to get them the job, but we gave them a pickup and free gas to get there, and we ended up paying travel time. They went back eight years, courts had helped, you know, back there, and that's a federal, federal.
Okay, so do we want to increase the fire on men?
I'd be better.
So, what idea would you feel like?
Would that come in better?
Will we stick to the one thirty? I mean, that's not even probably sufficient, but.
Let's.
So, it's possible for it to be up to six thousand dollars right now.
Or.
Per employee, how many employees?
Six.
So, thirty-six thousand, so you're looking at a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Just.
We might put it in there, but the only thing, if we put it in here, then they're going to say, because we're still in negotiations, then they're going to say, well, you budgeted, so you have the money, so we want.
We want.
Is there any other place we can put it? Yeah, where you work, where you.
We do have the contingency.
Well, there you go.
You can take it out of contingency.
Let's put it in.
We do.
But I still think we should probably increase the firemen another, I would put it back to the one thirty.
One thirty.
Okay. The next one we have is the building maintenance.
Right.
Question why the price went down, and we talked about increasing it to the eight thousand dollars, going back to the same.
It was kind of one of the.
Are we going to have to increase the part-time as well?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I think we'll be all right.
Okay, so, any other questions on that?
Just one on the medical dental life.
Uh-huh.
Um, to date, you've spent just under thirty-five thousand. Uh, according to the financials that I looked at.
Uh-huh, no, no, it's at fifty-seven.
And the, the line there is at fifty-seven six. That might be some of. Where you hide it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That might be some of your contingency right there.
As long as it's in that personnel, personal services, even you're okay, so, or contingency, so, yeah.
And then also, one more, the retirement contribution, it went down to ten-three-fifty.
Mm-hmm.
But you've spent almost twenty.
Oh, gosh.
This year.
Where was that at, sorry?
Under, um, the.
So it should be fifteen.
Retirement contribution.
The ten dash fifty-five dash two thirty.
Should be like twenty.
Yeah, we're at twenty, so.
What, twenty thousand?
Yeah. We're currently at twenty right now.
Okay.
Probably have to be twenty-five, sorry.
It probably should be, I think there are any, still, this was not including. Yeah.
Dylan, I'll tell ya, the best thing I want to do is on property in the other county. Or it's not the county, you know, not it.
Okay.
Any other questions on the building?
Good? Yes. Anything about the baby door?
Uh, it looks like it was paid for in May of two thousand nineteen, is, does more than one need to be upgraded?
No, but it was not paid. They have not done anything.
I might have read it wrong.
Oh, you show it paid. We spent four thousand year-to-date actual for the bay.
Actually, what he did is took the work. That was the electrical work done at the other building. Out of that, not in there.
Yeah.
So the building that we have on North Second Street that is, they put, Dennis wanted electricity in that and so he took it out of that.
So it's going to reuse?
Yeah. Yeah, it, we got it from official monolith.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And then, but he wanted electricity, which it didn't happen, he, and he put certain.
See, that's not expected, um, expense again then.
Right, not that part with the bay heaters.
The bay heaters still there.
Yeah, you know, it's priorities.
Okay.
Okay.
Air quality, we did not have questions, can I understand you? It's good there. Over to the planning department. Okay, and then, I'm sorry.
Although I did not have the year-to-date from air quality, do anybody else?
Have that, that, it's a little under that, it's like ninety-six hundred dollars spent this year in that, but normally we spend a fifteen because we get everyone.
Can we get a copy of the year-to-date so we can, I mean, the balance sheet on that eventually, so we can see where we're at on that as well?
Yeah, so, right now, we have spent year-to-date nine thousand six hundred and sixty-nine fifty-six.
So it's probably, it should be then.
So. But yeah, I'm gonna run these one way, so maybe I'll feel like you have tomorrow, okay, you're lucky, so, yeah.
Okay.
And, um.
Okay.
And then, okay, there was a question on the planning, right?
Right, and did he increase?
Mm-hmm, yeah, she has worked, I upped her when I got here three years ago, a thousand dollars, but she has worked for how many years?
Ooh, god, even before I was on the council.
At that same. And there's a lot more landing fees coming down the pipe?
To me.
To me, yeah, yeah, and she actually came to me and asked for, I think she asked for sixteen and I thought fifteen's pretty good, you know, but um, she figured out her hours versus what she's getting and she's not getting paid very much for what she does, so, and we don't want to lose that position.
Well, there's no one you can replace her with.
No, unless we're counting.
There's nobody that has that expertise.
Go to county, maybe they'll pay more.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I, it increased her salary because of that.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
And that's one I, I don't shoot on either.
Yeah, but I'll then, because right now we've spent just, for her salary alone, just at seventy-five, seventy-six hundred.
That's my foot.
I know, I, they're reward.
They move my foot.
They're gonna start kicking me.
Depends on what you say over there.
Russia be good.
And we took out.
I'm keeping score.
Yeah.
That's first. So we took out the transfer.
Cause we were wondering why it's.
Are we on, still landing, still on the.
No, it's because you had a loss on the pool.
I just took that out, sure.
We had a loss every day.
Well, we did, to cover some of that.
Yes, yeah.
And that's.
I don't know why I had it in the planning, I think because.
Cause it's been there the year.
I know why, it's because of the grant that we were hoping to get sometime, you know, and the cost for, but, well, I took it out.
Um, then in the HUD special project, we had questioned the increase of like twenty thousand dollars and that was because the rehab house loan was paid off. And a way that the council needs to talk about how to redistribute it at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's take that page. Okay, um. The nine-one-one.
Was bigger.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, um, currently you said that we were at two hundred and ninety thousand for taxes, nine-one-one taxes?
Right.
But we went up only to two seventy-five thousand?
Right.
Cause we didn't know for sure what next year's could be.
Well, nine-one-one is such a good thing and there's a lot of different changes coming down, so I still think it should be, like I said, two seventy-five, it would be a good number that's solid.
But I thought they were looking at legislatively passing an increase on nine-one-ones these.
They may, but that would give us more money, but you can't really budget.
Speculating, man, you can't budget till it happens, like this gets you in trouble.
Well, I was saying, we've already spent two maybe.
The legislature's done meeting.
Well, that's right. Probably just right now.
Exactly, they all left the state.
We can.
So it's like a cop. Cause that's right, yeah, we'll get something else, sorry.
That's all the further, the Washington DC or Washington State. Washington State, so that's not far enough.
We put it, as I said, to the two ninety.
No, I was, I was thinking of expenses.
I do.
Yeah, so, um, so we proposed two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
Originally, and then we're saying two seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. But then you also have a question around your annual assessments because they haven't all been collected yet and so.
Okay, that's why they're only at one thousand two hundred and fifty currently, okay.
Yeah, cause they're not all in.
We're supposed to get four to six thousand and we've only brought in twelve fifty, so how can you, I mean, it's, it's scary and we need to, that's another thing for council, cause to get that IGA up with all the users and all of that.
Um, I had a question on the nine-one-one miscellaneous income as well, cause you've got seventy-five dollars through May so far. And you've got to budget it four thousand four hundred and fifty, is there something you're expecting there?
So what are we, are we changing it?
I'm lucky.
Okay.
I am lucky. Yeah, I think I'm lucky. I think we need to just. I'm surprised, I've got like a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Sorry. That's, yeah.
So what should that be?
One hundred and eleven.
And then our annual assessments.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be unrealistic to change our annual assessments?
Um, we don't know where it's at yet because they haven't collected them all.
Yeah. And the transfer in program support was water, sewer?
What, the sewer department puts in money into the, um, that program support fund. That was the only place I aligned to get money to balance the budget.
Program support.
Right.
The transfer there from sewer or water?
Yeah.
And a transfer balance there.
And it's, when I reread that deal, that's just sewer, that's what's into that. But I increased it cause we gotta balance it somewhere.
And then we talked about COA on dispatchers. Do we need to build that in there?
Cause we're still in negotiations, they're asking for two point five. But that has to be not what I can get. And that, I mean, they'll get some.
That's one thing, there's gotta be something, I feel like. How many employees does that cover?
That particular line item covers the six, basically, full time.
So even a. Number's that.
Yeah, they won't hold that. They're gonna go for more.
Yeah.
That'd be four thousand six point five, if we could, so we add, we get, we should add at least five thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, they're ninety?
And they'll ask for every half a nanosecond.
Well, that's okay, but.
Make it not go now, so.
Figure management will also.
No.
Two man?
No.
That'll stay the same?
Cause he's gonna be starting.
Okay, okay.
And we are significantly reducing our overtime?
Is that because we're seeing the expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is there. And who knows what's gonna happen with this negotiation, this contract?
It's gonna be not done.
It's gonna be a battle.
Do we have a balance sheet for that one?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, where are we at overtime?
Yeah.
Two nine-one-one.
I think you had it at thirteen thousand.
I thought it was something like that, I didn't, I didn't write it down, but I think.
Nineteen thousand.
As of this day. But, like you said, if you're not having somebody that supervises that says you can't be doing this, I think that's gonna make a big difference.
Well, yeah, they start counting and you gotta have so many hours off from this time to this time before you come back, that's gonna, that's gonna significantly decrease your overtime. Cause they're coming back like two hours earlier, three hours earlier and then they're getting a lot of overtime.
And they know how to plan the system and they don't have a supervisor that has said absolutely, you know, you do that, so.
So yeah, there's definitely an overtime issue over there.
Yeah, okay, so do we all leave that overtime the same or do you wanna increase it up?
I'd like to leave it the same.
Leave it the same?
Just leave it the same and see if the changes that we made and if it's gonna make a difference.
Changes from the labor.
I see there were no other changes on that page. Nine-one-one equipment, fifteen and five thousand dollars, we did.
And is that the upgrade that they did with the equipment?
Now, it's just for other things that need to be.
We can replace a tank for the every time, some others.
Always something.
There's always something.
We received like two hundred seventy-five hundred dollars from OEM, like an emergency unit.
OEM.
Just to do the upgrades, it was a huge upgrade, so we shouldn't have too much left to do now, but you never know.
What about the servers over there, is that, you can, there's issues with the servers over there?
And I think Scott said something that we need to update that.
That's who I heard it from.
Yeah.
But, if everything goes on, maybe I wonder.
If that's.
How much.
I know, there's not just so much going on with that, so.
And now we're on the street fund?
No, we're still on nine-one-one. So we put the five thousand in there.
Right, for the equipment.
Yeah, we're put though, okay, so.
Okay. So now on to the street fund.
And I did make a couple of changes on that.
Right, okay.
I added back in the SCA, the special city lot and the grant, cause we're eligible again, hopefully we'll get it, with fifty thousand dollars. And I reread the CMAC contract and it says that we can have up to two eighty-two, five seventy on the Katermas Road eighty.
Ooh.
So.
So that would cover some of that over. The bridge that we.
Yeah, yeah, so anyways, so I increased both those, not only just in the revenue side, but on the expenditure capital outlay.
Okay. And, um, medical dental was, you had taken, is, the way it was split between the street and the sewer, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that's why there was a change there.
On the supervisor, um, through May, you've spent eleven thousand, but have seventy-three hundred budgeted. I, I didn't know if those were up there, and the holiday vacation. Yada, 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 that's about, it's a little over two thousand right now.
Yeah, and the same with the weekend, do we? Well, you could.
So I don't know if that's just due to the split?
It is the split and it's only supposed to be so much of Jeff's hours, that's seventy-three hundred, and then if they take the vacation, buy out, which we're trying not to in the street fund.
Okay.
So.
And then utilities, you got them set at fifty?
Mm-hmm.
But it's been, it's almost fifty-four.
Oh, we probably should put fifty-five then. They go it down a little bit in some of the.
Fifty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Which one are you on?
The eight to dozens for the street fund.
And the fuel was increased also.
Right.
Yeah, the fuel.
Where, where?
Fifty-five.
Uh, fuel, we're at three thousand.
Thirty-one, yeah.
It was at two.
Is there a misallocation going on with the telephone as well? I was just curious, because you spent forty-three hundred, but you only have two hundred budgeted.
We just checked a little three hundred, one hundred twenty-seven. Cause for sure. It is a misallocation and it shouldn't be so much towards the street fund.
It should be going somewhere else.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that page?
On the crack ceiling, there's two thousand in there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that just out of the street fund or is there crack ceiling on awards maybe?
There's one on side to. There should be other sides, there's a lot that.
Yeah, cause two thousand bucks for crack ceiling, you're inviting material.
No, but we haven't used any.
Yeah, definitely.
Year-to-date.
And we've had it for a year.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, they're just gonna drag it around town.
Well, they haven't allocated it, we come out of it. They just drive around.
They just drive around, make it look like you're doing something.
I have fun with that.
Does like smoke come out of there?
Yeah, I put two thousand in that water also.
Okay. So you got four thousand allocated. And the same thing, you banked four percent, you got it.
I don't blame you.
We drove that thing all the way through, I'm surprised somebody didn't stop us.
Okay, so, um, capital outlay was just corrected to match the revenues up there, so, yeah, so. We, the park fund. The twelve thousand dollars was, for donations was the rotary cool peppers, what they're helping.
Okay. That's what we.
Cause we, yeah, that's what we thought it was and so we care.
So the revenue. If I was reading the thing right, was about ten K?
It's exactly what I got.
Okay, but we're budgeting twenty-two, is that more in line with history or?
History, yeah.
Okay. Was last year a down year?
No.
Yes, because of the snow.
Well, the snow too. We had their slows off like four days, three days last year, but it's just...
Well, I hear a lot of reports that people are enjoying the pool more because it's not freezing. Are you guys seeing an increase in the use then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We had this meeting beforehand.
Yeah, we just talked about it. The numbers were...
Yeah, which was good.
And so then on Sundays, we'll make sure if people want to have parties, maybe rent it out. You know, we rent it on Sundays and not... I don't know that one group came through and said they had rented it and they hadn't. Getting the pool and they didn't check and find out that wasn't true. Yeah, but when they have a party, they can do it on Sunday.
The permits and licenses was corrected back to 300 dollars.
Right.
From 300.
Yeah.
And that's was correct there. And the travel, we figured was okay, right?
Right.
For training and... Anything else on that?
Um, we... I don't have a dollar sheet on that either, so... One thing we can do, well, I put under capital out there was 17,000. And that was for the regular pool cover, the panel that we purchased. One for the small pool. If that were 17. And means, you know, we only have 12 up above on the pool cover. It's gonna be right in that, you know, 10 to 12 above part. So we could decrease that if we wanted to, or even, because we haven't done it in the past, we could delete that one. I have to pay for it somewhere, so at least...
So what is the major floor here?
The major, well, we need to repair the roof, the bathrooms, that whole changing area needs to be...
Water system, so you don't have cold showers for the girls and hot showers for the guys.
That whole area needs to be done.
I'm good with that.
I was gonna say.
What we're doing is we're changing the dressing rooms.
That's a great idea. We all know the guys have showers.
I was gonna say you can smell me from close. I wouldn't doubt it. We had a hell of a day in freight today.
So this is a grant we are applying for, have applied for? Hope we do apply for?
We're hoping to apply.
Okay, same with the...
And it needs to be applied for prior to February next year. Because Daryl was going to reapply like they did last year and we ran out of time.
Do we know what organizations specifically?
We're getting parking rights.
Okay.
Head start was the... The snow and flood on the shore. We had a question about the transfer out to Bullard Canyon. And it was explained that it's because it's the flood portion of the collections, not just snow. It's flood. Okay, and so that makes sense then, why it was transferred out.
But there were other questions. When does that surcharge for the ordinance stop?
When the fund gets to 50,000. When the snow, yeah, the revenue comes to 50,000 dollars, the ordinance says. Right.
Or does it say that fund in general?
That fund in general.
So it doesn't matter if it's flood or... So by taking out 10,000 dollars, doesn't that decrease the funding balance? Which isn't really probably what people want?
But, you know, and we really do monitor that to make sure. So, and what I think needs to be on the bill is probably a snow flood, but maybe have it help people at least take them off.
Really, it's almost sitting at 50,000?
Yeah, so we'll stop collecting them.
Prior to any transfers out?
So, yeah.
That's like a two month. Is it still being charged?
It is right now.
So that was about a two month.
Yeah, but one month revenue.
And with circuit placement fund, there were more questions. Bike path trails, we have more questions. Still the same. Program support. And this is something I wrote notes, but now I don't understand my notes. It says last year to transfer to 911 fund and ordinance is set up to do this, is that it's okay to do it? Is that right?
Right.
So it's okay to transfer?
Yeah.
And then because there is an ordinance, it seems we can't fix.
So that's that 84,000 we see back.
Yeah, because we put the 67,500, we bring in and then we went out to the park and we went out to the 911. Done that for the last two years, so.
Okay, so that was probably doing that, okay. The building funds stayed the same. The fireproof funds stayed the same. The lodging tents, now that was something I think there were questions about. How much lodging can people be in anything? And I think what you had given me was, you had said was 66,745 currently. And so 75,000 is pretty accurate.
And what we'll bring in?
And what we'll bring in at the same...
How much has been spent in that dish?
That what?
How, how much have we spent?
3,000 dollars?
Yeah.
Ah, let's see.
Didn't we give that?
1,200. Or 2,000. Well, there's money, it's not showing. 1,000 dollars for Archify E Street.
We just did that and it doesn't show it.
Then we did. How much should we get for printing for Chamber?
Yeah, for the brochure.
For the brochure?
Well, that was 1,500.
Was that?
And then 400, I think, 400, 450, something like that, to round up for the print, their cards that they printed.
The cards is what we took out of the lodging tax one, but the other one, we took it out of... It came out as a bike?
No, that was for the bike craft. That was something separate. The 1,500 was for the trails.
The trail.
Was that out of their money then, the trail money?
That was out of the...
Lobby tax.
Okay, so we've spent now roughly 25, 3,000, 4, 5,000, 5,000-ish? And we have a balance of 66-ish?
So all the...
Which I've been working on getting the word out there about that too. And I did put it in the newspaper as well.
Jessica brought up to me that, because we voluntarily then, E Street, that the other people...
They will be submitted.
And that's what I told her. I said, this happens. And she goes, well, you didn't have E Street do that. I said, no, but...
Actually, we did tell them.
We, yeah, but we did that to be proactive and try to draw more people to apply for that fund. So if they want a reimbursement for their advertising, we should fill that out. And then we'll prove it and be done with it.
Because as of, and this printout, we've received 66, 701. We've only spent 2,045 out of the lodging tax. So we have a lot to do. We need to get it out into the community.
That's right, it was 545 for the roundup.
And that just went out in the newspapers.
Right, and I just...
Information's going out there.
I received a letter from the roundup for Fairboard from the, they'll go on this council meeting. And then also we're getting one from, or we received one that was too late for the packet, was for the bike path that went along the street.
Along Wood Street?
It was too late, I thought it was... Probably too late. We were already done. I saw it with our provision, get it ready and then Thursday's.
It needs to be in by Thursday.
LCP is also asking for money for the Algea Theater. And I think she said there's seven... It's gonna be coming.
On the fair one.
Well, we're not gonna look good at this stage if we haven't...
That's why we need it away. That's why we're like, start...
We already saw our fair and roundup one.
But we do recognize that the roundup and the fair are two very different entities.
Yes, right.
That don't play well with each other.
You kind of feeling ugly then.
On system development?
System development has been the same on that. The Bullard Canyon was answered because the transfer was for library removal, flood control.
Flood control, because they're cutting the...
And also this year, there needs to be some work done, public works to get that...
From that inspection, it makes...
Like we had this year, we're gonna be in real trouble with that.
So make sure from what I heard, maybe the policy is true.
So we have the funds there, but nothing's been spent.
Right.
And so we're...
So the money there is that maintenance?
Should be.
Right.
But it needs to be done. We don't want the dam to fail.
My house is what?
Yeah, mine too. I was watching the cringe. Oh, boy.
Utility fund? We questioned about the decrease in the beginning fund balance. And I believe you explained that was a second street project, the decrease of beginning fund balance.
Use whatever you have there to...
And, hold on one second. Moving on on the utility one. I talked to the Don with Rural Development, USDA Rural Development. And before we actually apply for fund for the water upgrade, we need to fund, split the utility fund out and have a sep... I've thought this since I've been here, I thought we should have a water fund and a sewer fund. And they're kind of cold, meagled on the revenue side. And she's asked if we wouldn't split those out in the budget, because we're gonna have to anyway.
We should, yeah.
And I really feel strong about that, so I will split that out accordingly. And we'll have a separate revenue for water. And then it'll be expenses for water and then one for sewer revenue and expenses. So I didn't get that done.
But it's the only way to accurately track it. And they're gonna need to see that when we go through.
And that's what she said, we would have to do that, so before this gets approved tomorrow night.
Um, you go to check on the Red Rock contract?
On that 130, is that what I was checking on?
I think they had zero in there now.
Right, because right now with Red Rock, we've already completed the water sewer improvements on Katermas. So that money came out, so we shouldn't have anything.
Don't want anything left to paving?
Right, and that'll come under the street fund, so that's anywhere about because of that.
So those monies have been paid?
They should be paid. They go into this fiscal year because it was completed. They might not get it until next fiscal year, like sometime in July, but it's been complete, so...
Job's completed, but final payment won't be till after the end of this fiscal year.
Right, but it should apply to this fiscal year. Yeah.
Dues and fees again, questioning...
How come the increase was...
Well, it was 7,500 dollars currently. We're gonna try to find out. Do we need to increase that up dues and fees for utility on water department?
It's currently at 75?
That's what, yeah. Which one was that? Budgeted 4,000, but it's a...
Your base currently 3,100. However, on our weekend duty work, we're currently at 800 and we've budgeted 6,000.
But that falls back on our sewer.
Yeah.
Because you're really low on water sewer.
And I need to sit down.
But we also went up out of the way to what we have budgeted, so I think that's how we had budgeted last year. This isn't correct. This is adopted, it's not correct.
For dues and...
So what did you say on weekend duty to keep at the six?
Well, last year we adopted 4,000, however, 6,000 is showing as adopted. And so I think we need to keep it at least four or less.
So where are we at?
800 dollars weekend.
Oh, okay.
I mean, 300.
So I mean, I'd be okay with going even lower, but 4,000 is what we budgeted last year.
Well, and on our contracts, and things changed. And I'm gonna think, because I know what it was. They get 200 dollars total. How many weekends are they getting? So times the 200.
52 times 200, 10,400. I have a moment.
So, yeah. So it should be split between water and sewer pretty much. So five and five, it should be five and five probably, if you look at it that way. Or six and six.
What did we put in water then? I know, but I don't remember what it said.
Oh, I forgot to do that motion to do it last time.
Uh, sewer for a year is the next one coming up.
We haven't seen it.
So what did come in there?
2,000.
2,000.
So between the two.
So make it five and five?
Yeah. Cool, fix that one.
5,000 to weekend and utility, 5,000 to...
We're both of them, again, water, weekends.
Well, do you think we should not have the five?
Both of them should be five.
Yeah.
Want to answer her.
And then, any other questions on that page there? I don't seem to have anything there. The USDA, I think we thought that...
Oh, I switched for, or did I switch?
No, you left on the same, yeah.
We didn't account for the chlorine increase. We are currently at 12,500 because there's a different expense.
Change vendors, yeah. 12 is what? Is it 12 in both?
Current, we're at 12.
And the what? I'm just seeing if it's also in the store.
Yeah, the sewer's got 8,000 in there.
That's what we're budgeting for, but yeah.
Yeah, so there's 16,000 between the two.
And we're okay on that.
So we're good there?
Okay, so read that in before you add the eight.
The next page was the principal and the interest, we believe is switched around. Should go the opposite, right?
USDA, the water bond, the principal and interest. And we didn't switch those.
We believe it's 12,000 as towards the principal and 6,000 for the interest.
Loan interest, okay, so the loan is 13. We actually have year-to-date zeros of that.
Right there, yeah.
No, that's not USDA. Okay, so we're on...
Water?
Utility fund.
I'm still, I'm still in the utility water.
Oh, right, right, right.
The utility water.
In about four lines down, USDA.
Okay, switch those.
Except looking at our year-to-date, those don't match up. I don't even see them on year-to-date.
If it's a yearly payment and it's made in June, I don't know, I'm just taking staff at it. It would show up.
Why doesn't it show up on the budget as a line item?
We're still on utility.
The USDA, looking at year-to-date, utility funds, I don't have any USDA. Line item even at zero.
Just wanna get looking at, I love it. As in no payments have been made, right?
Well, I don't even see a line item for it. Did you give you want some for due? Well, I don't even see a line item for, fifty-fifty-one, some fifty, so it's under DQ loan interest?
Yeah.
And DEQ loan fees, I'm assuming, they just don't match up.
As far as the account numbers go.
And so on the loan interest, the year-to-date is thirty-eight hundred with an expected of ninety-five. And then on our fees, we budgeted twelve and we received zero.
Spent zero.
Spent zero.
Are there fees every year with that loan?
I think on that one there is.
And principal is way off. So we need to clarify with that. Even the principal, it's got ninety-eight thousand year-to-date, somehow we're on the budget of fifteen thousand last couple of years?
Well, I think there's two different, there's two loans we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, that one doesn't match up, so these line items don't match up.
We need to make sure they, they do.
So, yeah, according to.
On fifty-nine, you're on page fifty-nine, and that would be the sewer. Are you on the sewer one for the budget?
No, we're on the water, we're still on the water. So looking at account numbers, DEQ loan interest, thirty-eight, thirty-four.
And that's the sewer fund.
Yeah, that's a different one.
Yeah, that's a different one.
So then where are you, so all the account numbers are?
One is fifty.
Fifty-one.
Two, seven, five, one, and one's fifty-fifty-one, seven, five, one.
Are you right, so those don't even, yeah, we need to know where this, where these numbers.
On page fifty-eight.
Then fifty-nine. Oh, I don't see it.
I don't see it, yeah, I don't see any.
On some pages?
Well, we have the bond payment right there, the USDA, fifty-fifty-one, seven-fifty-one, and the interest.
Right, okay.
Here.
So what are those actual numbers then? What's the principal, seven?
So thirteen, one, thirty-eight was paid, and the six-oh-three-seven, just like we're supposed to. And then next year it'll be the twelve-eight-seven-four and the sixty-three-oh-one.
Okay.
So we're right.
So those are right.
So those aren't slipped off, okay.
We just didn't have that page.
Okay.
Oh, that's wrong.
Well, it's what we.
Yes.
So on to the sewer departments. I didn't have anything like the sewer.
We're just changing the two thousand and five thousand.
There was.
Hold on a second. On utilities, through the eleven months, you've spent twenty-seven, they only have twenty-three budgeted. Those generally don't go beyond from year to year.
You can increase that on your company? It's twenty-seven now?
You're going to have one more month on there?
You can see somewhere closer to thirty-five.
I think you need to see somewhere closer to thirty.
Over thirty-five.
Thirty thousand, okay.
Utilities.
And sewer.
Any other questions on that page for the sewer department? Are the next page for the sewer department? The geothermal project.
I took out that, I increased the investment earnings, or that, I should put that up on our fund balance. It should be one million as for like two thousand seventeen, eighteen. So one million and one.
A one. It should go up a line, right?
Right.
Okay.
And the fees and services are about the same.
There's been money spent for personnel, but there's nothing budgeted, is?
That, that's why we're transferring some of this down here where it says to the utility.
Okay, transferring it to other places to cover the wages.
Because it shouldn't have been taken out of the sewer fund.
Okay.
Okay, so it's taking a long.
Just to catch me up on something, have we upped the fees for the hospital when they, when they've added their three buildings?
No, what we do is we have the BTU meter in there, but we're still not able to read it. We're still working with Daryl on that. So it's been three years of working on that, or two years yet?
No, we haven't drawn a diagram.
What's the prior, I mean, what's the, what was, refresh my memory, what was the issue, a programming issue?
Because now it's programmed and ready, you don't have to read, but.
We're having issues on that side.
And so.
Well, it's just, just laptop will.
That's totally ridiculous.
It's not acceptable. Part-time concern.
That should be top priority, so is that an IT person we need in here?
Well, that's a Daryl thing.
It's a Daryl and the person in front of us sitting down making it work is what it is.
Daryl needs to have.
That's a lot of revenue, man.
The other issue Daryl needs to deal with is a paving inside the sewer.
That's ridiculous.
I already talked with him and Jeff Holt about that, because he did exactly what I told him.
So, anyway, that's an issue that I've been on.
So are they going to pay back on that?
On the which one?
The geothermal?
No, the geothermal.
Are we going to charge them for two?
We should, I mean, that's why, you know, because they got it. So, ever since all those.
I'd love to talk that down.
So anyway, anyway, I took that one year fund loan out, because that shouldn't have been in there, so.
No other changes? Oh, utilities, we increased it because that would be up on the, on the DOC?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, you changed it already.
No, you already, you already changed it, we, oh, we increased it to twenty-three.
I just didn't highlight it, sorry, yeah, that's okay.
Now we're on the very wells.
They were increased for the facilities.
Twenty days, maybe it was twenty-three now.
Yeah, and that's.
She did, she did change it, she just didn't highlight it.
Yeah, forty-five.
On very well, I don't believe we have any changes.